Good morning, I'm calling this July 21st, 2025 Board of County Commission Meeting to Order. Please join us by with our invocation by Pastor Jim Harp this morning, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us, this beautiful day, and Lord, I'm just sitting here and wanting to thank you for our beautiful community. Lord God, we thank you for this wonderful place to live and raise families and work. And, Lord, just see your hand of faithfulness upon us. And, Lord, I've just led this morning to pray for protection, Lord, that you would guard us, guard our community, Lord, and that you would be glorified in it. Lord, your word tells us to pray for all peoples, but especially pray for those who are in authority over us, Lord, those who have been placed in a leadership position. And so, Lord, I pray that. The Apostle Paul says, "I urge that supplications, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgivings be made for all people, for kings and all who are in high positions, that we may lead a peaceful and quiet life, godly and dignified in every way. This is good, and it is pleasing in the sight of God, our Savior." So, Lord, that's that's my heart this morning. I pray for our leadership. I pray for the decisions that are made. Lord, I pray for this agenda today and all that's going to transpire, that, God, you would just guide and direct and give wisdom and discernment. And, Lord, we just thank you once again for all your goodness to us, God. This is the day the Lord has made. The word says, "Let us rejoice and be glad in it." I pray these things in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. First, we will take up public comment. The first speaker I have is Tom Pine, followed by Ms. Paris with Helping People Succeed.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name's Tom Pine. I've been a resident of Martin County for over 50 years. According to Google, we have entered the New Gilded Age. It is a proposed time period of United States history that is said to have begun between the 1980s and the 2010s and has continued to the present. Over the next two days during this time of public speaking, I will highlight several areas where I feel our local government is doing everything in their power to push us into the New Gilded Age. It was around 2000 to 2003 that our Martin County government started using the consent agenda in a questionable manner, in the name of efficiency. It has been suggested to me county commission meetings were held once a week and often lasted from 9:00 a.m. until well after 5:00 p.m. Martin County Commissioners are full-time employees of the county who earn full-time salaries but only attend two meetings a month. At the July 8th, 2025 county commission meeting, the Hope Sound Commissioner asked Assistant County Administrator George Tokus if local residents can use the ship program for assistance in hooking up water in sewers. Yes, they can, was the answer. Of course, they have to meet certain financial requirement. On the flip side, our Martin County Redevelopment Agency has been getting out 20,000 grants to local businesses to spruce up their properties. There's one big difference. There is no financial requirements. That's because most, if not all, would never be able to show the financial need for help. So I want everybody to understand this. Sewers are a positive for the entire community, but to get financial help, you have to show a need. Sprucing up your business property, all you have to do is live in a community development area, put out your hand, meet some basic requirements, and you get $20,000 on the taxpayers' back. This scheme has been going on for some time now, and you can look around the county and see some of the buildings. Downtown Jensen Beach, on the north side of the road, $40,000 to help paint them. Maybe put a window in here, fix a door. Hope Sound, the corner of Bridge Road and Dixie Highway, where all the antique cars are parked, $20,000 to spruce up the property. It never ends, just sucking the life out of the working class in Martin County to help the more affluent around here. It's a shame, but life goes on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Paris is next, followed by Maria Esperando.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just wanted to share with you that your contribution to helping people succeed directly supports our Employment Options Program. This program helps adults with intellectual disabilities find and keep jobs. And I would like to cite two real-life examples. You've helped James keep his job at the Martin County Clerk of the Court for 15 years. You've helped Rebecca keep her job at Florida Linen for an astounding 30 years. Not only are you making an impact on the individuals we serve, you're giving them a reason to wake up each and every day. And for that, we thank you.
Thank you. Maria Esperando is next, followed by Teri Kogle.
Good morning. My name is Maria Esperando. For some years now, I have been alarmed at the tax increases imposed by the Martin County Board of Commissioners. But I have never taken the time or the effort to complain until today. When I learned yesterday that the new proposed budget includes $90 million in increased spending, a 13.44% increase year over year, even though inflation year to year was only 2.5%, I was both disgusted and outraged. At that rate of increase, the budget will double in five and a half years. I am comfortable in my retirement, but that does not mean that I want my money thrown away. Moreover, many in Martin County are living paycheck to paycheck, paycheck to paycheck, social security check to social security check, and cannot afford an increase in taxes. When you ran for county commissioner, each of you promised that you would be careful stewards of our hard-earned money. Baloney. Our taxes have increased exorbitantly year after year after year. I shall not be voting for any of you again, and I shall actively campaign against each of you. Three years ago, my 18-year-old refrigerator started to spill water onto my kitchen floor when it defrosted. But did I buy a new refrigerator? I did not. Since the refrigerator was otherwise working properly, I simply put an old towel in front of it to zap up the water. I did that for three years until it no longer worked, at which I at which point I thanked it for its loyal service and bought a new one. Would I have liked a new refrigerator when mine started to leak? Yes, I would have. But did I need a new refrigerator? No, I did not. Several years ago, my microwave's light, exhaust, and certain settings no longer worked. But did I get a new microwave? I did not. Since it still works on certain settings, I have made do. Like the (cough) I can tell you other things that I've done that I didn't want to waste money on. So I tell you all of this to say.
Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. Teri Kogle is next, and that's the last request to speak form I have. If you'd like to address this, please fill out a form and get it to the bailiff.
This is my fourth time trying to get some answers regarding that one evening meeting a month. People have been trying to get an evening meeting for years without avail. You are five commissioners who have total control over a large county with little or no input from the public. Commissioner Harrington, Heatherington stated that she would look into evening meetings a few months ago. Her question can be being can be in the budget handling. And the county is willing to spend money on overtime and other issues. I believe the cost of one evening a month would be a slight burden on the county budget and would be of great benefit to the majority of the working taxpayers. Commissioner Capes stated he doesn't want to be stuck here till 1:00 a.m., and I have the issue resolved by a review of the Martin County June 17th, 2025 meeting agenda. Out of the 26 items on the agenda, 17 items can be resolved in a meeting. Those are the ones that I have checked. Two items could be day or night, depending on the topic, and that's on Page 6. Two items are questionable, and that's Pages 4 and 5. Only five items would be of interest for the evening meeting circled on Pages 4, 5, and 6. That leaves items that are departmental, monthly meetings that could be covered in the 9:00 a.m. morning, monthly morning meeting. You have no attendance in your 9:00 a.m. meetings, which you can actually see here today because of the working public, which is now a Martin County majority unable to attend. May, June, and I'm actually considered this month because this is a budget meeting, the county held one meeting per month. We don't want to be acting as an across the sea, and the only thing I can say is we've got to do something. People just need to get here and at least let you know what's going on. So if you could give me some kind of an answer soon, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'm going to depart a bit from tradition, and I'm going to pull consent item two, which is transitioning authority to approve Platts from the Commissioners to the County Administrator. I think that that deserves public participation. So can we have a motion to approve the agenda, including the consent agenda, excepting consent agenda number two?
I will move a motion to approve the agenda, pulling consent number two, including the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Including the consent agenda.
Except for, yeah.
Pulling consent number two.
I will second that.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Let's see. We'll now take up Commissioner comments. Commissioner Vargas.
Just to address the last person that spoke, I've inquired about the evening meetings, and I agree, we do need more support and participation. So I will continue forth with that at least once a month we shift. We'll have to figure that out with staff, though. And I've spoken with our county administrator also about that numerous times. Yeah, I have some good news, though, before we start in the budget hearings. We had a recent trip to Washington, D.C., and the we is Commissioner Capes, Chairwoman Hurd, we had our county administrator, Don Donaldson, we had John Mayo, our legislative core, excuse me, our environmental resource administrator, and we also had Sarah Powers, our legislative coordinator. So we had the opportunity to meet with the Army Corps of Engineers, the staff, and the Office of Management and Budget. And we discussed several key projects, including the Hutcheson Island Shore Protection Project. That's a four-mile beach renourishment effort. We strongly encourage the Office of Management and Budget to approve additional funding requested by the Army Corps staff to fully fund the project. Well, we are pleased to share that the funding has since been approved. Martin County's contribution to this wonderful project is zero, $0. I repeat, $0 for this multimillion-dollar construction project. Our federal partners have come through for all of us, and we'd like to extend our sincere thanks to the Office of Management and Budget staff for their diligent work and support in moving this project forward quickly. With this approval in place, this project is now on track to go out to bid this summer with construction anticipated to begin this winter. Again, we appreciate the commitment to coastal resilience and support of our community.
Is that all? That's great.
For the moment. I do have a question, though. I saw Commissioner Heatherington questions. I'm a little confused as to what this is. Can this be explained to me?
Commissioner, those were a series of email questions that we got over the weekend. We provided Commissioner Heatherington a response to those questions, and we included you all to have a handout for you so you could see the responses to the question and the and the abbreviated response to each item.
Okay, and the questions were from?
Commissioner Heatherington.
Okay, so these are questions from Commissioner Heatherington. All right. This has nothing to do with the other letter that we received from the state?
No, it does not.
Okay.
These are questions that I posed to O M B or departments, which they answered, and they're providing that to all the answers to all of the other Commissioners.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to look at this. It was just on my desk here, so I haven't had a chance to study this at all.
I just sent them over the weekend, so it also just landed on my desk this morning.
Okay. Commissioner Capes.
I'm good today.
Now, actually, there is a new Caps in Hope Sound, is there not?
That's right.
This is a wonderful new addition.
My first grandchild, a boy. His name is Caleb John Farley is his last name, but he's a cutie, and we're quite proud of him.
Wonderful. Congrats.
Do you have pictures?
I do.
He does. He has pictures.
Commissioner Heatherington.
Oh, I, you all saw that Governor DeSantis announced on Friday while we were in Marco Island to, they were going to speed up the EAA reservoir by five years, so that was good news on Friday, and he made a trip to Marco Island to do so. And the second, I was thinking, I was having a conversation with Karen Ripper from the Council on Aging regarding how many, is she here? Oh, okay. Oh, unregarded to the budget, how many seniors were actually being impacted by fraud scams of that note? And we had a long conversation, whether it was, you know, certain programs of energy-efficient windows, or they were having, you know, being scammed on these devices. I thought that it would be good sometime in the future if both the Sheriff's Department, and I spoke to the Sheriff's Department, too, they agree that it's a major problem. And we all get all of these notices, too. Maybe do some kind of short informational piece to educate seniors on how to be aware of some of the scams that they're, that some of the perpetrators are putting out there. So, yeah.
Sounds good.
That's all I have.
Mr. Donaldson.
Yeah, just one item. I did speak with the Chair earlier. Tomorrow, Jupiter Island has an agenda item regarding a cost-share agreement with us regarding contribution to their beach program that we're obligated to under our management plan. And so that in the event that this meeting spills over to tomorrow, I've requested that we would start at 11:00 so that it would give myself and Commissioner Capes time to attend their meeting first thing in the morning. So, thank you.
Sounds good. Ms. Woods.
Ma'am, thank you.
Okay, then we will take up the consent two, which is adopting a resolution delegating authority to approve, accept dedications, and amend textual components of Platts. And here to explain is Ms. Elder.
Yes. Elise Elder, Deputy County Attorney. I think Mr. Grzelka, County Engineer, is here as well. So the Florida Legislature amended Section 177.071 to require Platts to be approved administratively with no further action from the Board of County Commissioners. And as a result of that, we are bringing an ordinance change next month to the Board, and we are amending the Platt resolution and to update the signature block, to have the County Administrator as the signer instead of the Chair. And we also, our County Engineer and our Lisa Wisher updated some of the Platt language because the last resolution was approved in 2002, and it was just out of date. So there aren't really any substantive changes to the textual changes of the Platt. The main change is the change from the Chair to sign to the County Administrator. And because in Platts, the Board accepts dedications, we also had to delegate the authority of the Board to accept dedications of the Platt to the County Administrator, and that just will allow the County Administrator to accept easements on behalf of the county. When we do dedications of road, there will be a deed that will be accepted by the Board of County Commissioners. So it would not be accepting fee simple inland. It won't be accepting property. It would just be accepting easements in the property on the Platts. And the final delegation is whenever you have a Platt approval, usually you have a surety bond and a contract for construction and improvements, and that is also signed by the Chair because it's approved with the Platt. Because the Board cannot approve anything having to do with the Platt, we also delegated the authority to sign the contract to the County Administrator as well. So all those things are included in this resolution. We are going to amend the LDRs, I believe, in August. We didn't do it sooner because we were waiting for the Governor to sign it, and then with all the noticing requirements, we couldn't get it before the Board quick enough. So we're just approving the resolution now, and then we'll have an ordinance change next month, which will be a public hearing to change the delegate, to change the authority in the LDRs. This doesn't change any of the notice requirements, so I believe applicants will still have to put a sign up on the property, so there'll be the yellow sign, so neighbors will know if a Platt is under works because they'll still have to do the signage that's required right now.
Okay, so just to be clear, this was not initiated by the county. It was rather, it was imposed by the state and became law on July 1, 2025.
Correct. So that's the only reason why we brought this forward, to eliminate any public participating.
Commissioner Campy.
Thank you very much, Ms. Elder. I appreciate that legal version of the response. Thank you. I had the same questions this morning. I had a couple people reach out to me from Palm City Farms with concern, like, how would this affect them? And I did have an opportunity to speak to Mr. Donaldson and Ms. Woods this morning, and I thought Mr. Donaldson summed it up quite well in layman's terms, and I would ask that he do, if he could give the same explanation that he gave me this morning to everyone else.
I think the issue was, how does this relate to the development and the whole process? Keep in mind that the Platt is the final instrument that is heard by the Board or now by the, your county government. And so the site planning process, the, your final development approvals, all of those standards go through the same normal process. The Platt is the final instrument that allows the subdivision of land for sale to private or to anybody. So it is what dedicates the easements to our Utilities Department, and it's all, and it is, it's the final public record, if you will, of a development project. And because it allows for the sale of properties, that's why there's all these sureties in place so that you don't have people plating something and then the infrastructure's never built. So it is, in the process itself, when it finally gets to us, our decision-making is limited to, does the Platt follow the state law? Does it follow the county's ordinances? And so there isn't a lot of, there is no judgment involved in terms of the county staff or the Commissioners in its final disposition of whether a Platt is approved. That process is really in the, in the site planning and in the final development plans.
So there'll still be opportunities for the public in the beginning of the project and then sort of towards the middle of the project? And by the time it gets to Platts, that's more, as you said, administrative, administrate. If someone had a question or concern or comment, could they still reach out to you?
Yes, we'll have that outlined in the process, and that will be discussed and shown in our, in our updates to our land development regulations. But how anybody can, especially in the creation of the Platt and the, in the common properties and the dedication of easements and other properties, the input on that is important, and so we will still have a process for, for the community to make comments on. I think an example might be, did the, in your area where we've had dedications of equestrian trails as a part of the Platt, and the Platt is the final instrument that secures that it, that it happens.
And I think that's what my, many of my constituents are concerned as they try to still continue to figure out what is an appropriate equestrian trail on county right-of-way versus people's private property. And I agree with what Chairman Hurd said about, this was not something that we had come up with here locally in an effort to pull back some participation from the public. This was a state law that was mandated.
Commissioner Vargas.
Yes. I believe that we have had before us requests for approval of Platts. Now, this is now administrative. I know there were quite a few laws that came into effect July 1st. I'm familiar with a lot of them.
Your motion to approve consent two.
I'll move approval of consent number two.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. We'll now take, should we work through B and C one? Which is a request for a waiver of conflict of interest under Section 112.3137A Florida statutes for the appointment of Travis Waddell to the Rio Neighborhood Advisory Committee. Good morning, Ms. Coras.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Susan Cora is Office of Community Development, and we are here to talk about a waiver of conflict of interest for Mr. Travis Waddell, and I'm going to turn it over to Frank Morley.
Good morning, Frank Morley, Assistant County Attorney.
Mr. Morley, would you move your?
Before you is a request to waive a conflict of interest for a Neighborhood Advisory Committee appointment for Mr. Travis Waddell. He currently has two contractual relationships with Martin County, a debris removal contract through his company, Bre Mark Construction, and then another contract through his other employer, Freedom Waste Services, which does dead animal removal on behalf of the county. Under Chapter 112, Section Point 313, the Board of County Commissioners can waive any conflicts of interest for advisory board members, and that is what is before you. He has filed his Commission on Ethics Form 4A, Disclosure of Business Transaction Relationship or Interest for both contractual relationships, and then has submitted a new application for the Rio NAC.
Questions. Mr. Campy.
Thank you for that introduction. What's unique about this situation? I know that we have had, normally, the concept of conflict of interest causes concern. I remember that we had this conversation recently, and you explained it to me. I felt a level of comfort in your explanation that I didn't hear just now, so can you speak specifically? Why would we, why would we give in this?
Yeah, and I'm happy to describe the situation. So Mr. Waddell applied for the Rio NAC. He filled out the standard application. On that application, it does ask a question about conflict of interest. He replied, "No." We then, he was appointed, and we then did our training session. We train each member, incoming member of the Neighborhood Advisory Committee, and during the session, we do a whole part on conflict of interest and sunshine and public records, and Frank was doing that at our training session, and he looked at us and raised his hand and said, "I think I have a conflict of interest." The application, after we looked at it again, it is a bit confusing, and I don't think that he completely understood when he checked "no." So what happens next is that he had to resign because he did have a conflict. That's the way.
Commissioner, I think the issue is that you have members of the public who may have a business relationship with the county, the process by which we evaluate them, and can they still serve on committees? can they still serve on committees? And the answer is yes, they can. And this is the process. I think Mr. Waddell has served on committees in the past. He's very passionate about the Rio community. The services he provides for, like dead animal removal, are very important to our Public Works Department, and we didn't feel that that service was in any way a conflict with his ability to serve on the committee. So therefore, in order to still maintain his relationship in serving the community, which he wants to do, this item is prepared to you, and I think serves really as an example that we hope that other people or business owners who may have some work with the county can see that there is a process by which you can still serve the community and be willing to come before you on this method to seek a waiver. And that's what's here today, is to ask you for a waiver which staff supports and your administration supports.
And, Madam Chair, I would also like to add, the contracts that are, that the applicant has were publicly bid. They were, so they were competitively bid. They were based on price. This wasn't, this was all done in the sunshine and according to our procurement, so it was based upon price. These were both competitively bid, so that, again, is why the county attorney's office supports this application.
Two more points, if I might. One, it's not as though the board, the NAC board, was completely full, and he is taking a position that somebody else is interested in.
That's correct.
So there's an open space that he's looking to fill. It's not like we're choosing between him and someone else.
Correct.
That weighed in my decision. And then, secondly, as a volunteer member of the NAC, which is purely advisory at a secondary level of advising, he's not going to have the ability to be approving financial contracts that he might potentially even be bidding on, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Vargas.
Yes, I do know Mr. Waddell. I know his family. They are local residents of Rio for many years. He is definitely an expert on our area that's in my district. I looked at the application, and I even said I would have answered the same thing he did. It was ambiguous, and so I directed the attorneys to go back and rewrite it in plain English, which they did. And I appreciate your efforts, sitting down with him and reaching out to him. I strongly support Mr. Waddell to be appointed to the Neighborhood Advisory Committee. There really is no other reason to deny this, and if there is some particular issue, a project comes up, there's a conflict, he will recuse himself.
Motion to accept.
I second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, aye. Opposed, that motion passes unanimously.
The second motion will need to be to appoint him to the Rio NAC.
Okay, is there a motion to appoint him to the Rio NAC?
Motion.
There's a motion and a second. Commissioner Capps.
I was just going to second. That's fine.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, aye. Opposed, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We will briefly take up Department One before we pass on to the budget process, which, Department One is a discussion of recruitment for the county attorney position.
Yes, Commissioners, in our, last time we discussed this regarding the hiring of the county attorney with the retirement of Ms. Woods, we have suggested setting up at least a committee to review the applications and put them in a tiered process of those most qualified versus the others in the, those that have applied. The committee is suggested as a five-person committee, including myself, Sheriff John Budenseeck, and our clerk of court, Carolyn Timmon. And the board's discussion was to have two, at least two attorneys from the outside participate. I provided a list of just, of attorneys that would agree to sit on the board. Most have very limited or no business relationships at all with the county. We have on the list Robert Kramer, Mark Gaylord, Bob Burson, Sean Plimal are all local attorneys at either personal injury or wills, trusts, estates, or real estate. And then Denise Marie Neiman is the retired county attorney for Palm Beach County. These were just simply attorneys that I contacted and are willing to serve. You certainly could propose another, but the idea was is that to have two of these serve with the other three of us. We will review the applications and then provide board feedback on the list of applicants and their relative qualifications to each other.
Commissioner Vargas.
Yes, I do have a question, because I'd like to review this. I just received this on Thursday. How many inquiries did you receive?
On the website, we had over 1,300 reviews on our various applications, and the, is what we had in inquiries. The total number of applicants at this time is?
Seven.
Seven.
Okay, so we're presented with all of the completed applications. Nothing was weeded out.
Nothing is weeded out because the committee has not met to review those with our, with the assistance of our HR folks, but that's the job of the committee to kind of go through them and give you a tiered ranking, if you will. And ultimately, the process that selects the county attorneys is yours. I'm here to facilitate that, and the committee's idea is just to help give some guidance to the board and some feedback. I would expect that we would meet again to talk about whether, what type of interviews may happen and other evaluation procedures, but this is just so that we can get the committee together, review the product, and then we would meet back with you again on the results and next steps.
Well, for starters, I think that I'm really happy that Ms. Neiman agreed. She is certainly qualified. She was, Palm Beach County is a difficult county, and she was their county attorney for a million years, so she's highly qualified. Everyone else is too. I like Bob Kramer. I think he would be impartial and objective, and he's local. Any thoughts? Commissioner Hetherington.
I don't know Denise Neiman, but I certainly think as a former county attorney of Palm Beach County, she would be acceptable. I do like Bob Burson. I think he's methodical, level-headed, and unrelated to many parties in the county. I think they're all really great choices, Mark and Sean as well, but I would want to include Bob Burson in there, and I could go for, on any of the others.
Commissioner Vargas.
Yes, as I said, I just received this list on Thursday. I'd like more time to review this. The next meeting should be soon enough that we can, that I would like to be able to make a decision after I do some work on this.
When's our next meeting? Possibly tomorrow.
The 12th?
Okay.
Commissioner Campy.
Thank you. Ms. Neiman was involved when we went through this process the last time, correct? Wasn't? When we asked for the State Association of County Attorneys, and then they?
The Florida Association of County Attorneys had her as the lead to assist with the search. Yes, sir.
I remember meeting with her. I think the tricky part of this, short of us forming a committee to decide, a committee for the committee, any of these names that you have put together that have come forward, I don't know how we would, short of literally picking someone out of a hat.
Do you want to just have Ms. Neiman?
Well, I think the two keeps you to an odd number or whatever. I mean, I think Ms. Neiman would be a perfect, fill one of the two spots, but then with the, with the one of four, even allowing our newer members to review some of these folks, they're all great. And there's like, you know, I wouldn't say, well, it should be Bob Kramer. Mark Gaylord's a superstar. Sean Plimal brings a different perspective, so any one of them. So for us to spend a ton of time trying to figure out who are going to be the people that are going to really do the figuring out, we almost need to agree that it would be Ms. Neiman because she's also from out of the county and gives a different kind of perspective, but close enough to know what we're up. Plus, she did the process last time when we selected Ms. Woods. Other than that, I don't know how, I know all those folks. I would not want to render a recommendation on who it should be out of the four, literally, than picking one of their names out of a hat, because they're all excellent. So to turn that into a process starts to make this a little bit crazy.
Do you need two members?
No.
No, that was a, we do not need two members. That was the suggestion that you all made to me last time.
Mr. Capps.
Can we have a voting sheet made up and just settle this now? I don't think there's any great need to delay the decision.
We could, and we could create the voting sheet and bring it back before the end of the day, if you want to do that.
Works for me.
Okay.
Mr. Campy.
I could make it much more simple and say, I make a motion that we pick Denise Neiman to be on the committee. The other four are very successful, very busy. I'm sure they put themselves out to support the community, and I agree, we wouldn't necessarily need them at this time, and we would thank them for stepping up and just leave it at Ms. Neiman, because now we're going to have a voting sheet, and then we're not going to agree, and then we're going to have to have a second vote. Let's just pick Denise and let the committee do their work.
I agree.
Just to remind everyone, today is Ms. Woods' last day, so we need to have the process move along. I don't want to be in the fall, and we're still trying to figure out who it's going to be. We haven't even talked about the actual applicants for the position.
Commissioner Vargas.
Yeah, okay, so what I'm understanding is it's proposed that we're going to select Ms. Neiman, who's out of county, who's now retired, as I understand, and not look at any of the other four. Is that what I'm understanding?
That's what I hear.
As a suggestion.
I always hate to move in haste.
I'm agreeable to. Want a motion?
I made one.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to appoint Ms. Neiman to the committee. All those in favor, aye. Opposed, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Now we will begin work on our budget.
I have one other question. You will still continue to feed us other applicants as we move forward?
We will provide you all the applications, yes.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Can we, it looks like we have the complete sheriff's department before us here. Can we take them up first so that we can, they can get back to protecting us? Mr. Vargas. Is that an old line?
Yes, it is an old line.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioners, before Ms. Murley starts, a brief introduction, I think, you know, Martin County is a special place, and I think we're fortunate to have the resources that we have and the support of you and our constitutional officers. This budget really is, accomplishes just a couple of things. Most importantly is our commitment to maintaining what we own and operate. The department's first role is to build a budget that certainly maintains only what we had last year and what was planned to be built this year. We also, and with that comes things like increases of electricity, contracted services, those types of things that are in there. We also looked at, the department's made a number of requests for additional employees to fill needs that they saw. We did go through that list, and 11 are presented in here that made it to the presentation here. Not all of those that were requested were submitted to you all. And it's also important to note that, you know, some of the changes in the budget reflect, do reflect a growth in things like utilities, but a lot of that growth is from our own actions of septic to sewer, where we're adding new customers over and above the actual population growth, which is still quite small. I also think it's important to note that there's a lot of questions about the economy and where things are going. I can tell you that our building department is usually the first to show any kind of signs of that. Our number of building permits from year to date is at or more than it was last year, and the value of that construction is greater than last year. So we're certainly seeing the county itself move, certainly in the terms of projects like Newfield and Discovery and Pulte. Some of those properties are coming in much higher values than what we saw in the past, which is also our challenge, you know, in terms of housing out there. Certainly Indian Town, we saw them groundbreaking on, I think, in terms of having workforce housing in that $300,000 range is something that I think will be just starting off. So I think what I am, it's important to note that as things are, when we try to project in the future, our, we have a stable construction market in several projects that unless there is a significant recession, we would expect to continue on similar to what we've had this last year. Maybe not to the magnitude, but still, we will still have a growth, our small population growth with high value. And I think Ms. Murley will go through more details, but it's important to note that a couple of areas that we were putting in for the future are our reserves and the ability to buy down debt and to solve a few problems that were brought up this year in terms of our capital. I think the final thing is, is that the, a significant increase in the overall budget is due to the taxpayer voted in, sales tax. The voter referendum for the purchase of land for conservation and easements adds a significant amount, and we have to budget for that. And so of the major increase, that is a significant increase in our budget. And so with that, Ms. Murley's got a nice presentation, and we'll be here all, our whole team, to answer questions as we move through the process and appreciate your feedback. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Stephanie Murley, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, here to present to you the fiscal year 2026 budget workshop. On today's agenda, we will give an overview of Martin County budget and process, the basis for the FY26 tentative budget development, the tentative budget the total revenues and expenditures contained, an analysis of our tax base, our budget impact from the July 1, 2025 valuation from the property appraiser's office, the FY26 budget development summary, a review of all of our constitutional officers and county department budgets, and then finally we would set the Martin County tentative millage rates. First, I'll remind you of the budget timeline. The budget process begins shortly after the fiscal year began back in October and December with the development of the capital improvement program. Concurrently, OMB and the departments analyze, review, and refine the operating budgets and departmental needs throughout February, April, and May. Back on April 22nd, the board tentatively approved the CIP, which was the first step of the development of the FY26 budget. The property appraiser's office provided preliminary taxable values to the county on June 1st. On July 1st, the certified taxable values were provided by the property appraiser, and the county uses those values to calculate the proposed millage rate that we are working with today. So today is July 21st, when the board has the opportunity to review the budget as a whole and set tentative millage rates based on discussion that is made here today. After the tentative millage rates are set, the county reports the rates to the property appraiser's office, who will then send out TRIM or Truth and Millage Notices to the property owners, making them aware of their proposed 2026 taxes. The board will then have two more opportunities to review the budget with public hearings in September to ultimately adopt the final millage rates for the fiscal year that begins in October. So why are we even here? The county administrator is required to prepare and submit the operating and capital budgets per Florida state statutes. The budget as submitted is considered a working document, and changes may be made throughout the workshop. After a full review of all of the budgets, the board will contemplate the proposed millage rates at the end of the workshop. We have allotted an additional day for the workshop if needed, if it does not conclude So some characteristics of the FY26 budget. The budget as presented is balanced, which means that the total of all revenues equals the total of all expenditures. This budget re- reasonably anticipates all estimated receipts, expenditures, reserves, and balances. And finally, this budget provides sufficient resources to conduct the business of the So how do we even budget? Martin County utilizes an incremental line item budgeting approach, which takes the previous year's adopted budget and uses it as a base for the new budget. Nonrecurring budget requests, such as a piece of equipment, are deducted from the base budget, and then OMB and departments carefully monitor the revenues and expenses of the base budget and make line item adjustments or reallocations as necessary to maintain the current level of service as well as identify efficiency opportunities. These adjustments include contractual and/or mandated obligations of current county programs and services. Line item incremental budgeting provides stability and predictability of county services and prevents drastic fluctuations in service level and budgetary needs. The FY26 tentative budget reflects the best efforts of county staff and the county's constitutional officers to maintain the levels of service as expected by county residents and to provide the financial approach to execute the county's strategic priorities. The vast majority of the county's budget is attributed to contractual or mandatory obligations that the county is required to fulfill, such as retirement rates set by the state of Florida, responsible insurance coverage for county property, and contribution to community redevelopment agencies of both the city of Stuart and the county. In this budget, county departments were directed to maintain current budget levels, with the exception of those items that could not be absorbed without creating levels of service deficiencies. Many departments maximize current line item budgets by reallocating within their respective departments based on the most current needs and trends of each division and are noted in each division page. To give you a little snapshot of the current year's revenue collections through June that we are using as a basis of projection, we are about 75% through the fiscal year, and these are collections as of June. So we have fully collected all ad valorem taxes from the tax collector's office. The county's investments continue to outperform all budgeted expectations, and this is largely due to the diligence of the clerk of the circuit court and comptroller's attentiveness to the county's investments. The county has collected over 86% of all anticipated charges and fees for services and is on track to fulfill those anticipated collections. State revenue sharing, gas taxes, and half-cent sales tax collections show a lag due to state distributions typically being behind about three months, but based on current trends, we can expect to fully collect those revenue types. And then enterprise funds, such as utilities, solid waste, and the airport, are exceeding their estimated collections to date and appear to be on track to fully, to collect their fully budgeted revenue estimates. So a little bit about Martin County's economic landscape. The Martin County's non-taxable valuations due to value limitations such as to save our homes, non-homesteaded agricultural and property tax exemptions, impact the county significantly and account for 36% of the county's total property valuation. The housing market for Martin County is also indicative of the South Florida inflationary trends, with the median sale price of a single-family home in 2024 coming at $578,250 compared to 2023, which was $574,200. But while the median sale price is $578,000, the median assessed value of that same single-family home in Martin County is $309,839. So here is a little snapshot of the 2025 taxable values. These were as of December 31st, 2024. The taxable values for each taxing authority under the purview of the Board of County Commissioners are listed in this table and reflect a healthy tax base for Martin County. Taxable values are calculated and provided by the Martin County Property Appraiser and assist the county in deriving the millage rate based on the budgetary need for county operations. The FY26 tentative budget accounts for total estimated revenues of $763,103,070. The county budget is comprised of various revenue sources. Ad valorem or property tax accounts for 44.8% of the total budgeted revenues, while other sources of revenues such as fees, state and local shared revenue, and fund balance account for 55.2% of the total budgeted revenues. And since our revenues must equal our expenditures, our budgeted expenditures are also $763 million, with the breakdown as follows in this doughnut graph. So now for our FY2026 ad valorem impacts. The total new ad valorem generated, if the millage remained constant from FY25, would have equated to approximately $40.2 million. The county's actual ad valorem need, based on the budgeted expenditures, amounted to $38.1 million, which resulted in a reduction of the total millage rate from the last fiscal year. The ad valorem impacts are as follows. All constitutional officers in the 19th Judicial Circuit offices account for 30% of the new ad valorem at $11.5 million. The capital improvement plan, which was tentatively approved on April 22nd, is included and accounted for $5.1 million in new ad valorem. The CIP added funding for public buildings, roads, and stormwater management needs. Various reserves were allocated in the FY26 tentative budget. General fund restricted reserves are fully replenished based on the county's fiscal policy reserve requirement of 10%. Additionally, the FY26 tentative budget builds strategic additional reserves to support a strong, long-term fiscal strategy. These include reserves for future capital projects identified in our CIP, which fully funds the Supervisor of Elections Building Expansion Project and sets aside funding for future fire station needs. Additional funds are being set aside to establish recurring revenues for anticipated public-private partnership projects, such as the Martin County Operations Facility, which will serve as a county operation hub for public works, general services, and parks. And finally, this budget includes reserves dedicated to debt repayment, helping to further improve the county's already strong, long-term debt ratio and reinforce its strong standing with credit rating agencies. Other ad valorem impacts to the budget include the mandatory obligations, such as the Florida Retirement System contribution rates that are dictated by the state, county and city of Stuart CRA payments, and health insurance premiums, and new ad valorem requests related to technology needs to maintain current levels of service, and new position requests for library, general services, and fire rescue complete the budget drivers from an ad valorem impact perspective. That was a lot of words. So the question every taxpayer asks, where's my tax dollar go? And here's a little infographic for the typical unincorporated Martin County taxpayer. 61% of each dollar goes towards public safety, which includes sheriff, fire, E911, and emergency management. 28% goes towards general governmental expenditures, which include all of the other constitutional officers, county administration, county attorney, general services, public buildings, and information technology. 7% goes towards roads, stormwater, and environmental expenditures, which seems small, but those dollars leverage millions of grant funding opportunities through FDOT, FDEP, FIDE, legislative appropriations, and more. And then 4% of each dollar goes to culture and recreation-type programs and includes the Martin County Public Library System and general park operations. So to give you a little Martin County debt snapshot, the county's long-term debt continues to reduce as a result of principal payments budgeted within our debt service division, which represents 2.3% of the total county budget. Governmental bonds and capital leases have decreased over the last five years, whilst utility septic-to-sewer bonds and state revolving loans have increased, which aligns with the Board's strategic priority of the septic-to-sewer conversion program. As mentioned previously, the FY26 tentative budget includes reserves for the satisfaction of debt, which ultimately continues to strengthen the county's strong debt ratio and capacity, as well as our outstanding bond ratings by S&amp;P and Fitch holding at a double A-plus rating. The Martin County B.O.C.C. Personnel Summary includes a total of 1,167 positions, which represents an increase of 11 positions from FY25. Positions requested are included in the library, general services, airport, building, public works, fire rescue, and utilities department budgets, and justification for each position is described within the division pages of the budget book for those requests. During the department presentations, staff will elaborate on the service level and public purpose needs for those positions and answer any questions regarding the impact those positions will have on their respective operations. The FY26 budget also includes 792.5 FTEs for the constitutional officers, which reflects new positions for both the Martin County Sheriff's Office and the Clerk's Office. In my final slide before we go to the constitutional officers, it's important to highlight the county's continued commitment to operating efficiently and planning responsibly for the future. County departments are perpetually analyzing their operations for cost savings or streamlined ways of doing things. This is evident in many departments' efforts, from maximizing volunteer opportunities for the county's libraries to evaluating the rebate potential of the county's P-card program through the bank. Energy conservation through guaranteed savings contracts, transitioning the county's light fleet operations, and pursuing proactive wellness initiatives, and non-surgical options for treatment such as on-spot dermatology visits and RegenX to minimize employee health insurance claims, provides tangible cost savings to make each dollar work harder for the taxpayers in Martin County. Concurrently, the county is planning for the long term. By building strategic reserves for capital needs and maintaining strong debt management practices, the county remains resilient, fiscally sound, and prepared to provide the governmental services the community expects. So this concludes my overview presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And if there are no questions, we may begin with the budgets of the constitutional officers in 19th Judicial Circuit. Thank you.
Questions for Ms. Merly? Mr. Capps?
Yes, Ms. Merly. Page five in the big book, Distinguished Budget Presentation Award.
Yes.
I know you touched on it just earlier, but I thought I'd let you explain that a little more. I thought it was interesting. And I want to congratulate you and your department and our county administrator for a great job putting all this material together. And I found it to be well organized and easy to understand.
Thank you. I love talking about our budget presentation award. It's the one thing our, the Office of Management and Budget gets to do. This is hopefully what I'm presenting to you would be our 28th consecutive year receiving the award. And what it is, is a very rigorous criteria of demonstrating transparency and accountability through a, through a document for the budget that is supposed to basically tell your county's story. So we have to maintain, we have to hit a whole bunch of criteria in order to get it, and we receive feedback every year and try to improve every year based on these very stringent requirements that are set forth through the Government Finance Officers Association. It's like my little baby. It's the pride and joy of my department, and I'm so thankful for all the staff in my office that contribute to getting this award every single year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Proceed, please.
Okay, so we have the constitutional officers budgets, and I will let the ones that are here, if they would like to, I believe the Sheriff's Office has a presentation. But overall, the county constitutional officers represented an 8.09% increase, or an increase of $11.5 million that we have budgeted. I just want to make a couple notes. The property appraiser, who's not here today unfortunately, but I'll transmit the information. This property appraiser's budget includes funding that was previously budgeted in the county's technology improvement plan that was transitioned into the property appraiser's operation during FY25. So they kind of had a shift of operations, so her increase isn't as large as it looks. And then the tax collector budget also includes the tax collector's operational budget, and then the estimated fees that we are expected to have to be paid by the county. So I just wanted to throw that out there. But otherwise, I'll let the Sheriff's Office come up and do their little thing. Hi, Kevin.
And in the budget book, the Sheriff's budget begins on page 505.
All right.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good to be here on this hot July Martin County morning. Commissioners, thank you for your time. County staff, Mr. Donaldson, Ms. Woods, we're going to miss you, by the way. Thank you for all your hard work. But thank you for working with us and allowing me time to talk through our budget, really for the most important audience in the room, and that's our taxpayers and the people that keep us going and keep us hired every day. My presentation pales in comparison. It's brief compared to the amount of endless work that's gone into this from our command staff that's here. And yes, I did bring a lot of backup with me, but from our command staff that's here that individually presented their needs from their different divisions to Kevin, our walking calculator here, our CFO. And then it was on us to try to come to U.S. Commissioners, come to Mr. Donaldson and Mr. Graham, and figure out where we needed to be this budget year in order to facilitate the needs of the Sheriff's Office, but also keep in mind the ask of our citizens, and that's not to raise taxes and to be fiscally responsible, which we've done this year, and we're proud of our hard work. Kevin, if you want to load up our first slide. This year, and for our taxpayers, our budget was dropped off the first part of June, so I know you've had time to review it. But this year, 2025 to 2026, our total budget request is $119,388,205. Our percentage adjustment on that budget is 8.84%, and that's an increase of 8.84%. Now let me clarify something that I know you all know, but it's important again for our audience, is that a budget increase within the confines of the taxes that have come in, in no way represents a tax increase. There's not a tax increase in our budget. Yes, our budget's going up, but we're growing as a business would proportionally with the county and the county's needs. We go to the next slide. There's some drivers in our budget increase this year, and I'll go through them. The last slide is where I'm going to spend the majority of my time. But we had an increase in the Florida Retirement System rates of $1.2 million. That's non-negotiable. The money crunchers in Tallahassee get together, they do their, they do their numbers, and then they send us a bill, and some of which we disagree with, we've tried to push back on through state legislation, personally tried to push back to no avail. Those are just numbers that we have to pay into the Florida Retirement System. So $1.2 million going to them. An increase in health insurance costs. I think that's across the board in any industry. Health insurance is important. We've done our best, as was already mentioned, to work through our clinic to keep our costs down. We've raised our co-pays. We've done a lot of things. Unfortunately, our employees are bearing the brunt of these insurance costs. And while we have a good plan, it's a costly plan even to our employees. Next slide is the rising cost of technology, hardware, software, and equipment. That's basically anything from guns to computer systems at the Sheriff's Office. Through inflation, it has gone up. And I know we joke about it, but it seems like if they paint it green or say tactical on it, they can double the price and charge law enforcement or government entities a higher rate. So we are studious in the fact that we try to shop these vendors and make sure we get the best bang for our buck. But the cost of everything's gone up. Vehicles, gas, the list goes on. And then the last slide that I promised I would spend the most time on, we have negotiated a 7% market adjustment for our employees across the board. And there's a lot of drivers in that. When we were preparing our budget this year, the command staff that's behind me came in with legitimate needs, asking for 50 new positions. Let me say that again, 50 new positions because of the different unit and division needs. And we started doing a deep dive into those positions. What do we actually need versus the wish list? Most of them were something that were actually needed. But the most compelling thing to me was the positions that we have currently funded that are vacant. Currently funded at the Sheriff's Office, we have around 630 positions. Of those 630 positions, 66 of them are vacant. 66 of them. More than 10% of our positions are vacant. And so instead of coming in here this year and asking you for 50 new positions, I thought it would be most appropriate to do a market adjustment and appropriately pay positions that we are already budgeted for in order to get good talent at the Martin County Sheriff's Office. These are some of the pressures that I'm up against as a sheriff, and I know some of your other county entities are up against the same issues. Over 52% of our employees, 52% of our employees live in another county because it's cheaper for them to live in that other county, and then they work here. 52% of our employees drive to basically Port St. Lucie every day after they come in and do their shift, and then they go home. This morning I got up, if you saw it, I got up and read an article in TC Palm that kind of highlights where I was going with this all along. And that article stated that Martin County is the fourth most expensive county in the state. And that article stated that Martin County is the fourth most expensive county in the state to buy in, the fourth most expensive county to buy in. And it sounds like a hard number to believe, but I believe that article also read that in the country, we're number 178. So we're a very expensive place to, to buy and then really to live. And that drastically affects our deputies. A little history on how the budgets have gone in the past, really the salaries have gone in the past. Traditionally, Palm Beach County has always made more than Martin County Sheriff's Office. They still do. They're one of the highest-paid sheriff's offices probably in the country. And our goal is, has never been to be parity with them, to be exactly where they are. But our goal is to at least see their taillights so our employees don't leave us and go down and work for them, which has been a problem that we have had until U.S. Commissioners met with, within Sheriff Snyder and gave a market adjustment in order to keep our employees from leaving, which we've lost a lot of good employees to Palm Beach County. So our model the last few years has worked, keeping them in sight. Our employees making enough money not to want to go down there, but more money than any of the counties north of us. But that's flip-flopped on us. In the last couple of years, Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office now makes more than our Sheriff's Office, and most of their municipalities do also. And now Stewart Police Department does. Port St. Lucie Police Department just got a significant raise. And St. Lucie County Sheriff's Office, if you look at their benefit package, makes more than our deputies. So with 52% of our people living in St. Lucie County, how am I going to get them to want to come and work in Martin County when we're paying less than where they currently live? So that's, that's really one of the things that struck me when we were preparing our budget and union negotiations, trying to get our staffing where it needs to be so we can facilitate, facilitate the needs of the county. Point number four on there, if you can see it, we're trying to maintain a competitive starting salary for recruitment and detention. Governor DeSantis last week was here, and one of the questions that he asked me was, Sheriff, with, with all the pressures in these other more liberal states and my $5,000 recruitment bonus, are you getting recruits here to Martin County? And my answer was, Governor, really? Not really. And I've compared myself to Martin County to other counties. But I look across the state, Pinellas County, $30,000 signup bonus plus the $5,000 that the governor's giving you. $35,000 to come in the door. So we have recruited from out of the state. We have recruited from other counties. But people do, when they're shopping for a job, are looking at their, at their benefit package. We have worked diligently, the command staff again behind me has worked diligently on a program now to recruit local town. I think some of the commissioners and I have talked about that. So we're trying to recruit local town, but we've got to get them the adequate pay so we can keep our staffing where it needs to be. So with that, the last, the last point there, that 7% market adjustment was needed to remain competitive with agencies that immediately surround Martin County. Now, a lot of times you look at these, these different agencies as they do their, their salary adjustments, and it looks like a horse race. If you ever watch a horse race, one second flowers, the horse is ahead, and then the next horse in the back and forth. We're not even jumping far ahead in this. We're talking about a $40 spread, I believe, Kevin, if I'm correct, between us and the Port St. Lucie Police Department. $40 spread. 7% really isn't enough, and I'll probably be back here next year asking for more just to keep competitive. So I'll close with this. We have, and I know every sheriff says it, but they're all liars except for me. We have the best Sheriff's Office in the country, not just the state in the country. And that's, didn't happen by accident. It happened because of my predecessors going all the way back to the beginning of the county, and this year we celebrate 100 years. They made this county a reputation across the country. Martin County has always been a force to reckon with as, when it comes to law enforcement. And so I have inherited something that's dear to me, dear to keep, and dear to the taxpayers of Martin County. And these individuals behind me do a phenomenal job every day taking care of whatever comes our way. Over the weekend, we arrested a doctor for homicide. We had a suicide. We had an overdose. We had an 87-year-old missing lady yesterday that we, we pulled everybody out for. There's stuff going on every single day. And even with our shortfalls, which I explained to you, they rise to the challenge. And they do that not just by themselves in a vacuum, but they do that because the commission supports them and the residents of Martin County support us going out there and taking care of business and keeping them safe. So thank you. I know I was brief, but if you have any questions, I'm here. And if I can't answer, I have the, the money wizard here beside me that can help. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you. Questions for Sheriff Foodenziek. Commissioner Campy.
Thank you very much. If you could go back to the slide where you had like one through seven, I think it was.
One through five.
One through five?
Yes.
Please. Perfect. Thank you. I think you're going to be the first of several today that are going to give us this information that's going to carry across all of the departments, especially public safety. We've addressed this in the past. Over 52% of your employees live outside of Martin County. Sheriff, you and I have had the opportunity to discuss this. I think that number is probably indicative across all of our staff. And then it leads to situations beyond just the obvious, that the folks can't live where they work. And I think most people would like that. So as a recruiting tool, as you had mentioned, never mind you could make a couple dollars more or a lot of dollars more somewhere else. You'd like to, you know, have a shorter commute to work. That also adds to when people are saying there's so much traffic on the roads, and our, our growth rates don't really show that we've, you know, exploded in development, but where are all these cars coming from, especially out of season? I think that there are numbers and statistics that have been sent around that nearly 50,000 cars come into the county every day from the folks that live somewhere else and work here. And then they obviously go home in the, in the evenings. So that requires a tremendous amount of traffic. Then there's the folks that live here that can't find employment here, that have to go out of the county, potentially north or south, because that's where the bigger employers are. And so there's those folks. And then there's the 25,000 to 30,000 folks that are fortunate enough to live and work in the same county. So when people are like, one of the biggest complaints I hear is there's a tremendous amount of traffic. Well, all of this plays into that. And so then we get to number three, which I remember also being an issue with fire rescue, is, and I have friends, as I'm sure everyone does, that have some of, you know, either in law enforcement or fire rescue, that work out of the county. And they would tell you that these agencies, just like you are telling us your concerns and strategy for recruitment, they're doing the same thing there, except it's a little bit easier when they can say, throw at someone, like you said, 10, 20, 30, $35,000 worth of extra money. But in your particular case, we can't afford to have 66 vacancies. And I think you didn't really touch on it. You also are responsible for our county jail. So if you could give us an understanding of how many, what's the percentage of your employees that, of the full staff, work in the jail?
About 630 employees. We have around 127 that work in our, on our jail over there. This year, in our budget, we did ask for, Kevin, was that, how many positions in corrections? 10 positions, because we're on track this year to spend about $4 million in overtime to offset, on a perfect day when everybody comes to work, we're still not where we need to be staffing-wise. So our staffing in the jail is relatively good as far as the, the budget complement, but we just don't have enough people. And we sat down, we crunched the numbers, and adding, adding positions will actually save us money in the long run. We've done presentations for you in the past. I know we're in the process. It's a long play of the mental health pod that we're working on. But because of the different, let me back up a little bit. The history of the jails, it's a 700-bed jail. But because of the different people that have to be separated, males, females, juveniles, adults, trans people, and the list goes on and on, our staffing has been broken up trying to facilitate keeping everybody separate. It's not just males and females and juveniles anymore like it was in the 90s when the jail was built. So our staffing has been sucked up and moved around the jail, and we have to grow. Thankfully, the jail population's not growing, but even with a smaller population than 700, we still have to have more employees to run that jail successfully.
How many people are in the jail currently?
Today, Captain McBurn? 594 today.
Okay, 600 people in the jail. And like you said, there's so many mental health issues that make those people very, very difficult to supervise. See, you're in a situation where we can't have any mistakes. And as you were making your presentation, I was thinking of all the different ways that that could happen. My wife's, three generations of her family are law enforcement, her grandparents, her father, all of her brothers. So I get the, one minute of one day could be catastrophic. So for that in mind, I appreciate all the efforts that you've done to try to create a budget that our residents could look at and say, okay, this is fiscally responsible. But everyone would be pointing the finger at you if something terrible were to happen. And they'd say, well, why weren't you prepared? Or how come you didn't have the right people there? And it's, it's a spin of the wheel, you know, the tragedies that we've seen happen all over. And we've been blessed here in Martin to not have the nationwide catastrophic circumstances that can happen. But even once something does happen, then do you have the capability to respond effectively? So I had said it to your predecessor, both of the last two, I've been fortunate enough to know both Crowder and Snyder. And now it's a pleasure, and I'm so thankful that it's you. Because the other point is, is that just to our north, you saw what that sheriff's race looked like and how that transition really was not what the residents would have wanted. So that was another benefit for Martin. So with that said, I appreciate that you've come with the budget that you did. I appreciate that you have scaled it back without hopefully jeopardizing any of your men and women that put the badge on every day or work also in the jail, because I've had the opportunity of touring there. I don't think most people have any comprehension of how difficult and, and dangerous that facility is quietly sitting over there in the middle of Stewart. So I don't, what are we doing? Tentative approvals today? I would with honor tentative, make a motion to tentatively approve your budget with at least my personal thanks to you and everyone that wears your, wears the badge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Vargas?
Yes. I appreciate what you're doing, the whole department. However, we are in an era of belt tightening. People have confidence and voted for you that you could stay within the budget. You received a healthy increase last year. I've looked at the CIP also, and I do have a lot of questions about that. You talk about staffing. You talk about needs, not just within the department, but also within the jail. And I think that needs to be reviewed also. Again, I appreciate what you're doing, but people who voted for us want us to stay within our budget.
Well, Commissioner, if I can respond, we are staying within our budget. If you look at the tax increase that's come into the county, we're well within the parameters of our budget. In the first part of June, we dropped off our budget to you, and I came and met with you personally. And I left you with, if you have any questions or you want clarifications, please reach out to me. So if you had any questions for the last month and a half, I've been completely available. If you have anything today, I'll try to answer them for you, if we can, if we can.
I believe any increase in revenue should replenish our reserve and pay down our debt.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Heatherington.
I will say, thank you. Good morning, Sheriff.
Morning, Commissioner.
So I'm looking at your slide, and while I think it's wonderful, we have our employees live here. I think you're seeing number three, you know, are, are on your slide across all, not just governmental sectors, businesses, workforce, and labor, and employment is on the top of mind of every business. Employees will leave for a few thousand dollars here and there, and I, I see our business is struggling with this. And on top of that, you have FRS and mandates. So I think you've done a responsible job of putting forth a responsible budget with looking at the conditions, because our residents expect a level of service. And while, again, I would rather have as many people that working inside of Martin County, living inside of Martin County, it's most important to me that you are able to retain and train and attract employees to provide the residents the level of service that they require. So I think as far as your personnel, which is your priority here, and I, I think it's been responsible. And I will say, not to, nothing unrelated to the sheriff, but one thing I did read over the weekend is our new CFO, Blaze Angolia, he said, if your local, if your local government have spending problems and they're taxing you to pay for that spending, rest assured, they are going to be contacted by me. We are watching. And those of you that know Blaze knows he means what he says. So I think this is responsible. I think we are going to be, in Martin County, I think we're going to prove to the state that we will use our taxpayer money responsibly. And when it comes to, I think, this budget as a whole, we're going to have to prioritize critical needs versus low priority creep. And to me, this is a critical need. So when we're looking and having conversations all today, that's what I'm going to keep in mind. Critical needs versus low priority creep, and I think this is a critical need. The residents expect it, and I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, Sheriff, I think that we all have been paying close attention to contract negotiations in our neighboring counties, and they're staggering. And, you know, we, we know what's going on in Palm Beach County. We know what's going on in Port St. Lucie. We know what's going on in Indian River County. So we know what, how difficult it is to negotiate your contract. And I think that you've done a terrific job of, of negotiating this contract. And I think it's important to note also that, that your senior, you and your senior staff are locals, you're natives. You know, this is, this is your nest too, so I think you're doing a great job of protecting it. Thanks.
Commissioner Capps.
I'd like, I'd just like to say that, you know, public safety is the most important thing. You know, it's the baseline for all the good that comes in our community. It's, it's sort of the baseline for a good economy and a good quality of life. And if we're going to have a great sheriff's department, we're going to have to invest in it. I'm looking at point number three that talks about the higher salaries in neighboring police departments and sheriff's departments. And I, I believe that is the situation. And so it appears to me that our deputies could be making more money somewhere else. And I would have to ask the question, then why are they choosing to serve at the Martin County Sheriff's Department? And it seems to me like morale is very high at the Martin County Sheriff's Department and has been for a long time. It's a great place to work. People are fired up about working at our sheriff's department. And I think that's a great tribute to your predecessors and to you. And we're very proud of our sheriff's department. And we live in an inflationary economy. There's growth in the county. There's a need for more deputies. We have a lot of vacancies. So I am in support of your budget.
Thank you, Commissioner. And you're right. It's not me that keeps the morale going. It's, it's really the county supporting our deputies doing their job. There's other counties around us that could be equally as successful, but the public doesn't support them. And we take care of business here, but we don't do it by accident. We do it because everybody cheers us on, and we do it within the confines of the law. But we do it the right way, and we do what people expect of us. We keep them safe. So thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Campy.
Thank you. In closing, I would say to Commissioner, excuse me, to Commissioner Capps' question, why do they want to work here? Obviously for the, for the respect and loyalty to your internal leadership, starting with you. But I think it's important that they understand that the commissioners, the county's leadership sends a loud and clear message that we appreciate them and we support them, not just in words, but in actions, which in this case is the budget. It's important that the public supports you, which we obviously are known as a law and order county. But we can't be a law and order county unless you all are giving us that, that right to say that. So I just want to make sure that you are hearing and your command staff, but all the way down through the whole department, understands that when you come forward with your budget, that the commissioners, the county's leadership has your back. And I believe we certainly do. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I know that. I feel that, and our, and our employees feel that. And our county sees us working together hand in hand. Again, when I, how I started off, this budget didn't happen by accident. We met individually. We talked it through. We figured out. We met individually, we talked it through, we figured out where we needed to be. We worked together to be where we are today. So thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks. There's a motion on the floor in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That motion passes four to one with Commissioner Vargas dissenting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Are there present, I see that we have the supervisor of elections with us, and the clerk of courts, and the public defender. Would any of you like to speak to us?
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
County Administrator Sarah, we will miss you here at the county level. Enjoy your retirement. Our best wishes. I don't have a presentation. You have my budget before you with a modest increase. I try to keep my budget flat as we move forward. But as the sheriff said, and as you have commented too, as commissioners, we all face increases, especially in healthcare, FRS. I do want to give my employees a modest increase in salary. And we do have many mandates through the legislature that have caused increases. So you have my budget before you. If you have any questions, we've also given you a hundred-year.
Well done.
Yeah.
It's remarkable how few supervisors of elections, we've had seven.
Yeah, I make number seven.
Yeah.
So enjoy. It's, it's really a rough draft. We have, we wanted to get it to you, to share it with you today, but we do have some additional edits to make. But if you have any questions, I'm available. I just want to thank you for your support. Thank you, Stephanie, for all you, you do for us. And Tracy, thank you as well. George, over in the corner, and Matt, thank you for all you do for us in elections, but I appreciate your support.
I think it's interesting that there's only seven, because you and Ms. Robbins make up 50% of the, make up 50 years of the hundreds. Congratulations, and good for you.
A few years. I do want to point out before I take my seat, page 10 in, in the document that I, that you have before you, we do have a voting equipment replacement account with substantial dollars. As you know, at the end of every fiscal year, whatever's left in my election account goes into equipment replacement. I will be coming back before you next year for equipment replacement. There won't be any additional funds needed. It's, it will be paid for through this reserve. But we are at a 20-year level with our voting equipment. So it's, it's time to make that replacement and upgrade. So with that.
Questions?
How is the design going for the expansion of the canvassing process?
Well, I haven't been able to get with Sean regarding the.
Right behind you.
Hey, Sean. But I appreciate the, the fact that it's factored into the budget for, for total, for a total build addition to, to the building. When the building was purchased, I'm not sure how many years ago now, Stephanie.
Many.
Yeah.
A lot.
It was 1.3 million for the building at that time. So you can see how inflation has caused cost of construction and just everyday living to increase. But the need is, is there. And Steph, Stacy, thank you for your support. All three of you who, who have been on the board have served in canvassing boards, so you know the need that we have for canvassing, for training.
You're busting at the seams.
Yes, we are.
You're busting at the seams.
We are. So.
Hopefully, we'll be able to get that, that new facility in between elections and before the next large election cycle.
Yes. Sean?
Sean Donahue, General Services Director. Yeah, that's, that's what we're working on scheduling. We did come up with a very good schematic plan where we take more advantage due to some mockups and Vicki was helpful in just moving some furniture around to see what it looked like, make sure it works for her and then flow and everything. We were able to take advantage of current existing space to provide a lot more efficiency. So we don't need as big as a, an addition as we were originally contemplating. We actually shrunk, shrunk that down a little bit for cost savings. So, so we just did geotechnical borings a week or so ago. We're working on the planning and the permitting of it right now.
Needs to be done by August 18th of 2026.
We are in a hurry.
Yes, yes. With that, if no one else has questions, I'll move tentative approval.
Second.
Any further questions? There's a motion, oop, Commissioner Capps.
I was going to second.
He puts the light on, he's still doing the light, he's new.
Thank you.
Got to jump in with both feet.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Clerk is here, we see here.
Ms. Timmon, would you like to address us?
Good morning. Thanks for giving us all the opportunity to be here before you today. I really appreciate that. I'm primarily here to answer any questions that you might have. I did want to make one special note on my budget request, and I wouldn't call this an error. However, we did return $89,000 of unexpended approved budget from last year. So that reduces us from, I think you had 11.54 or 11.58%, it's actually 8% once you return that $89,000. So although it's a high percentage, when you look at it like that, my budget is essentially a smaller amount, so any increase represents a higher percentage. Most of my budget request is FRS, healthcare, those regular increases as we've all experienced based on basic inflation. Then I do have the new FTE, additional FTE for payroll. That's to meet the needs of the county, as those increases have come up, including fire rescue and the complexities of that. And then one-half FTE in case you all, because I've heard from the courts that they're interested perhaps in Veterans Court, and if that occurs, we had to put that in the budget now. If that does not come about, then that, those funds would be returned as well. So that's primarily my request. I have a little bit of extra auditing money in there, again, to meet the needs of the growth in the county.
Commissioner Vargas.
I like the fact that you take care of the pennies, because the dollars will appear. I really do. And I think that's responsible. I, I'm really trying to keep the taxes down.
Right.
We cannot, cannot ignore the fact that taxes are way too high, and we need to be cutting expenses. We, you and I had a long discussion, and I understand that you, you know, you do have fees that you charge from other departments, there was a breakdown. And so the, the return of less than $100,000 makes it a little softer. I have 11.58, but it's 8%?
Correct.
Okay. At this point. And there may be a few more dollars coming, as I understand. So you just put that right back into your budget. You don't come back to us for more. Because this seems to, you know, been a continuum, you know, with a lot of departments here. And people have confidence that we can do the job, as I said before, stay within our budget. As we would personally, I would hope, maybe everybody doesn't do that, but I do. So I appreciate what you do. It's an easy job, but you make it look effortless. I will say that. We get healthy increases, we give, have, have been giving healthy increases to every department, and they really need to start belt tightening. They need to do what they need to do, and that's within their means.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Campy.
I would move tentative approval of the clerk's budget.
Second.
And while we're at it.
Get in there.
Yes, he, good for you. While we're at it, I would add in the property appraiser and the tax collector as well.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Would you like to speak to us, Ms. Liddy?
I would.
Okay, come on. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I didn't know this was your last day. Oh, goodness.
Well, maybe, maybe it's her last day, we're not sure.
Yeah, she's, you're going to come back again, right? No, I just wanted to say thank you, and, and if you have any questions, my, it's upside down. My budget went slightly up, but it was because of computers, et cetera. But I just want to thank you for supporting us all these, many, many years.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Liddy? Commissioner Campy.
Ms. Liddy, thank you so much. Can you, we know you, can you do us a favor and share a little bit of what your office does, the scope of your work? For the folks that are paying attention to our budgets, they might not be familiar.
Sure. What our office does is represent people who are accused, hello, I didn't say hi to you. What we do is represent people who are accused of crimes, who can't afford a private lawyer. We have currently 35 assistant public defenders. The rest of our staff, which is another 35, 40 people, our support staff, investigators, et cetera. With that, that small amount of attorneys, we represented over 16,000 cases last year. And we are very proud since, you know, 33 years ago, when I, I got elected. I really believe that our office could do more than just representing people in court. And we did that. We started diversion courts, which are in all four counties now, almost 20-plus years now ago. They are wildly successful. Mental health court, which you all helped fund when it was, nobody even knew what mental health court was. It has, has just been extraordinary. The average recidivism rate for those who are released from the Department of Corrections generally hovers at about 68% for those that have mental illness. For those who go through our mental health court in Martin County and the other counties, and this is, this is going to blow your mind, the average recidivism rate is about between 8 and 12%. So these diversion courts really work. We have a very robust reentry program throughout the four counties, which helps people get jobs and housing, et cetera, and get back on their feet so they're not frequent flyers, as we call them. And lastly, and you guys have, have been wonderful to support that as well, we started our own charity 15, 16 years ago now, called Life Builders of the Treasure Coast. And that charity helps people who have touched the criminal justice system or the dependency court system, which is the court where children who have been abused or neglected are placed, be successful. And we help with, you know, things like bikes to get to their job, or housing for one month, whatever. But it, it really makes a difference. And it makes Martin County safe, it makes everybody happy, it makes law enforcement not have to rearrest them again. So it's, it's a wonderful thing. But you guys have been wonderful to us, so we appreciate you.
Can you share with us how many years you've been in your position, Ms.?
33.
Thank you.
But I still love it, I'm telling you.
It's apparent.
No, I do, I swear.
Passion for it is so obvious.
Any further questions?
No, go ahead.
Commissioner Capps.
And the four counties are?
Okeechobee, Martin, St. Lucie, and Indian River. So all of you, let me tell you something. You know, these one-county, you know, constitutional officers, who we love, you know, talk about, oh my gosh, I got to do, well, imagine times four.
Right.
Because you folks are totally different than Okeechobee, are totally, I mean, it's, so you gotta, you know, you have to play to the crowd, if you will. I was at the Okeechobee County budget hearings last week, and they stop, I walk in the room, they stop everything, they say, Ms. Diamond, come on up here, just give us, is everything okay? Like, only in Okeechobee, you know? But it's fun.
How do you staff people? Do you, do you have to move them around a lot? Like, people who live in Stewart might have to work in Okeechobee for a while.
If we're short-staffed, we, you know, they, and that's part of the deal when they come to work for us, that they know that, I know you may have roots in, or have a house somewhere, but if we're short and we got to ship you to Okeechobee for a few months, you got to go. We'll bring you back, so you're not, you know, commuting so long. But yeah, we have to do that sometimes.
Commissioner Campy.
Make a motion to tentatively approve.
The remainder of the constitutional offices.
That's exactly what I was about to say, yes. The remainder of the constitutional offices and the 19th Judicial Circuit.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. And you, Sarah, you call me anytime if you just want to talk about the, we have so many stories, it's great. Anyway.
Want to do some public defending?
Thank you.
We are going to take a 10-minute break.
We are returning to our tentative budget meeting. We'll now take up administration, which starts on page 95.
All righty, so just to kind of set the stage, we're going to be going through each department's budget, department by department. You may provide tentative approvals as we go, but just keep in mind that this is a working document and you can make changes as we advance through the budget workshop. And any of these changes that are made throughout the department will be reflected at the end during budget wrap-up. So just to let you know, we can make adjustments as needed before the end of the meeting today. So we have gone in alphabetical order, so there was no rhyme or reason. And we're going to start off with the administration department with Mr. George Stokis here to kind of go through it.
Good morning, ma'am chair, George Stokis, Assistant County Administrator. Before you, on the slide is a representation of our tentative budget request. The request represents a 10.38% increase. There are no requests for an additional FTEs. Our budget considerations are, of course, to maintain the current level of service and support for all divisions, as well as one of the notes is the allocate funding to support services associated with the opioid settlement, prioritizing treatment, recovery, support, and public health initiatives. That's a result of the opioid funds in which we receive from the state of Florida. You can also see that there are goals there, starting off with really not much of a lot of fanfare there, but there are representatives from each division within administration within the room, and I'm more than happy to take any questions, comments, or concerns.
Questions? Mr. Capps.
Can you expand a little bit on the opioid settlement and when that happened? And maybe how much we got and what its purposes are?
Yes, sir. We received an allocation based on, I believe, a class action lawsuit from, I think it was from a federal court order. We receive approximately between $800,000 to 1.3 million per year for the next 18 to 20 years. And the Health and Human Services Division of Administration has moved that into your mental health and drug court costs, because in both courts, in both cases of that diversion programs, you have individuals who, I would say 90% of those individuals have some type of drug issued as occurring that brought them to mental health court or to drug court. And that's really the higher altitude. I was going to get there, sir. And if you had any more specific questions, I'm sure Ms. Miller is behind me and will be more than happy to answer those questions, depending on how deep of a dive you wanted to go into that.
That's good enough. Thank you.
Mr. Heatherington.
Yes, this might be Michelle, or it might be you, George. On page 97, the Human Services Medical Services, so in 2024, it was 5.9 million, and then the actual adopted. So it went from 5.9, and then 2025 adopted, it went to 353,000, and tentatively set at 363. I'm just curious, from the 24, why such a large number to such a smaller number in Human Services Medical Services and Human Services Housing?
Yes, ma'am, I'm going to have Ms. Merle explain that for you.
So during FY '24, we had reallocated the inmate medical services out of the medical services administration budget, and it now is reflected within the sheriff non-departmental. And just to talk a little bit about that, there was legislation that was passed recently with Sheriff, or not Sheriff, John Snyder, that we are now actively looking at to see potential cost savings with our sheriff's department with the new way that the cap is with the reimbursements. So we have maintained that budget level currently in sheriff non-departmental, but we anticipate able to reduce that significantly in the next year or so.
And Commissioner, if I might also add, going forward this year, I know that county administrator and his staff, as well as Ms. Miller, are working with Cleveland Clinic so that they can better utilize the indigent care funds, as well as making sure that those funds are better utilized through other examples. We are looking at Duval County, I think is the correct county, as to some of the programs that they're outlined, so that there's, you know, a better dollar to citizen cost ratio and service.
What percentage are utilized every year? And then do they roll back over into fund reserves if they're not?
So I would say at this point, Michelle would have the actual numbers, but we're probably using approximately half of what our indigent medical budget is. And when those funds are expended, they do roll back into fund balance, but those have been pretty integral in appeasing the inmate medical services increases that we have, were unexpected the last couple of years prior to the legislation being passed. So it really has helped offset those sudden increases, so we can maintain like a level budget.
Yeah, so the indigent medical can be paying for not just the jail inmates, but will be shifted back to actual indigent care. So that's the benefit of the local bill, allowing us to negotiate proper rates. And then the item that Ms. Merle talked about will require another special act or revise the existing special act, so that we can spend the funds as requested by Cleveland Clinic. And so we're looking at that in terms of that language, working with the county attorney's office. So we expect that to be one of our legislative requests this next year, so we can amend that special act.
And then one more question. On page 100, agenda process time, so in 2024, it was 92%, and 2025 projected 75%, 2026 projected 75%. What is agenda process time? And why was it in 92% in 2024 and 75% in 2026?
Well, ma'am commissioner, we, the projected is the goal or the line, my understanding is this is the goal or the line where we want to measure success. However, in 2024, we brought, we agended the process on time 92% of the time. For '25, I can't provide you actuals because we're not through actuals.
Is that releasing, like define agenda process time? Is that releasing the agenda to the public?
No, I think it's multiple metrics. It's both when we release it to you, as well as to when we release it to the public, which I believe is, the draft is, I believe, two Thursdays prior to the meeting, and then the final agenda is, I believe, Thursday at noon, the week before the Tuesday of the meeting. And I think Ms. Gordon, that falls quite into Ms. Gordon's realm, and I am very often the receiver of notification that we need to get that moved forward. She's very good at effectively communicating that to us.
That's all I have, I think.
Commissioner Vargas.
So what is the increase, percentage increase, then? We're talking about the administration at this point, correct?
Right.
So the bulk of the increase is related to the costs that are basically fixed, which is your increase to FRS, your increase to health insurance, your already contractually negotiated salary increases. That's really the majority that all the 10% falls under. There's no additional FTEs.
And the additional opioid settlement funds that have been included within this budget. So it's a lot of the cost of doing business, maintaining levels of service with the staffing that you currently have, based on the mandates of Florida retirement system, health insurance, FICA, Medicare, those mandated rates, as well as opioid settlement funding that has been added to that budget.
Okay, that's a lot of money on administration. That's a lot of money. And we do spend more than we should here with administration. We need to be cutting our expenses, however you want to do it. Everything should be looked at. Nothing is sacred. We are in the era, I said that before, of belt tightening, not expanding and not bringing more people onboard. So you're going to have to look at this and make it work, however you can.
Commissioner Capps.
As I thought I would mention, the various departments within administration and the staffing levels in each one of those departments. On page 101, there's the administrative, administration division. And in 2025, we had 12 people, and we're keeping it there at 12.
That's the same for all divisions within administration. There are no net increase of FTEs or full-time equivalents to the administration budget.
Right. And then page 105, administration office of management and budget, that's your department. You have 11 people, and you're keeping it there, 11. And then page 107, administration commission, there are, we're 10 people in 2025, and we're keeping it there this year.
That's correct, sir.
And then, let's see, there's one called Human Resources and Risk Management.
HR.
12 last year and 12 in the coming year.
That's correct. No request for an increase.
And then we have purchasing, page 113, six people last year, six people in the coming year.
Correct, no increase, no request for an increase to FTE.
And one more, communications, eight people last year, keeping it at eight in the coming year.
Yes, sir, we're not asking for an increase into our FTE.
And is that it?
Nope, you also have Human Services and Community Services, which is point nine. We're not asking for an increase in that one, sir.
Okay.
The next one after that is Veteran Services. We are, we're last year at 4.05, and we're asking for 4.05, so no increase into that. However, I did send your offices about a month ago a memo talking about the increase in efficiency and customer support that has occurred. I think Mr. Drouse is doing a phenomenal job, and it's a full turnaround in that department. I'm sure Ms. Miller is behind me and would agree.
He is.
Madam Chair, on Human Services, Social Services is point 85. I also would like to add, most of the positions in Human Services are not county FTEs, they're contract FTEs, so there's, federal programs are dismantled or not, no longer being funded, those, no longer funded. Those positions can be let go if need be. And then we will work as staff to see how we can bridge the gaps in that type of funding. But in that division, you're at point 85, and we're not asking for any additional FTEs. The next one is Human Services Substance Abuse and Treatment Assistance. Last year was 5.25, the next one is 5.25. There's no ask for an increase. And I can keep going through each one if you want to work.
That's good.
Okay.
That's good. I think the point's well made that you're doing what you can to hold your staffing down and to be as efficient as you can. And I think you're being reasonable, so I would move approval of the administration budget.
Mr. Campi.
Thank you very much. Sort of tagging on to what Commissioner Capps was mentioning about, just sort of giving the viewing public, because most of us already had an opportunity to discuss this with the different departments and/or already know the departments. But since we have new commissioners and probably new people following along this year that we might not have had in the past, and since we're on the first one of the book, Mr. Donaldson, can you share with us sort of your marching orders to the department heads on, you know, flashback six months, nine months, a year ago? And discuss what your marching orders were to the department heads? It's not just, hey, present any budget that you'd like, and, you know, whatever increases in money or personnel, just have at it. Can you share? I know that in years past, there's always sort of like marching orders. Can you share with them what they are? And then since we're just starting, and this is administration, and basically our administration leadership is here, I'd like the departments, as they come forward, to share a little bit about what they do. Because I know just the thing that spurred that in my mind, Ms. Merle, is when we were discussing your 11. Beyond putting this binder together, it'd be interesting for the public to understand exactly what your 11 people in the department do. I'd like to hear that from the other departments as well. There's a concept here that maybe it's just a free-for-all, and, you know, it's a money grab, and we have more people, and we're spending money inappropriately. There is a real fiscal conservative nature of our county's government that starts at the top with Mr. Donaldson and runs through every department. I don't think he has to twist arms. The department's leadership and personnel all understand it's not a free-for-all here. So maybe this is another year for a refresher in that we can't just assume everyone understands what the departments are responsible for.
Certainly, Commissioner, and there is an element of trust and, but verify. And so I think Ms. Merle talked a little bit about the beginning, and it was a very short description, but that is, you take your budget and you look at how you're spending the money this year for, or last year. And we only want to account for changes of what was the cost of doing business. You hear us talk about that before. And so if, for instance, Public Works has contracted out a certain amount of mowing, they mow some, any acres right away or whatever, a legitimate request on that is, I had a contract for $750,000, and now I rebid it, and now it's $900,000. That would be described as a cost of doing business. That would be accepted as a change, a legitimate change, a cost of electricity or something else like that.
May I stop you just for a moment?
Yes.
On that example? Using your example, Public Works had a $750,000 contract for cutting grass, and now it's nine. We don't just accept the nine.
That's correct. You would base.
There's a process of beating people up, you know, figuratively.
Yes.
Going back, and it's not like, well, hey, it was 750, now it's nine, I guess it's nine. There's a process that.
Right.
Validizes the nine.
Well, the other choice is, is if you can't afford the nine, then you reduce the mowing frequency, or so that's, or we rebid it, or, you know, those, so there is, absolutely. There's a process of whether or not that that change was accepted, and that dialogue happens with you all as well, in terms of, that's where that adjusted budget comes in. Is this, is the amount of that contracted service correct? And if the actual cost to deliver that service is more, we basically ask the question this year, you may have already approved a contract to finish the previous year at a rate of $900,000. The budget is another opportunity to ensure that that is the actual level of service that we're doing. So getting back to the general process by which we do this is to look at those costs of doing business. The other part of that is, is the budget office and administration would look at, are there certain areas within the budget that they are consistently spending more on? There are certain repairs or certain items that are costing more in vehicle maintenance or something like that, and other line items that perhaps they are, could go down. And so there is a line item adjustment process, too, within all of the department's budgets, from everything from like travel to publications to the actual buying of equipment and things like that. So that, and you'll see descriptions in the, essentially in all the items to talk about, a lot of the budgeting process is readjusting within the existing approved budget to make sure that the money is being spent where it's needed, and if there are some items, line items that we could cut back on, so that we can shift it to where it's needed. So that's happening. So that's the, that's the most critical part of the budgeting to start with. Then the next piece of it is, you know, I'm not able to meet a certain level of service. I would like to add a person, or I'd like to add a process, or I'd like to contract for some other item. And then that is, comes in as a request to the county administrator. And then administration will review with each of the departments their request, and we vet through those in terms of what we feel can be as a legitimate, they're all legitimate requests, what we believe would be augmenting the board's objectives. And then we submit those in here as a request for an addition. So you have your base budget, which is cost of doing business, as Ms. Merle puts it, and then you have the request for a new service or a higher level of service and the justification. There are more requests in here than were presented, more FTEs than there are presented, and we felt that the budget presented to you was indicative of meeting the board's priorities and objectives. But as again, this is a workshop, and as we go through some of those individual requests, it's the judgment of the board of whether we include those additions, or is there a particular level of service in an area that you feel should be looked at?
Thank you. It's a judgment of a majority of the board.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
I'd second Commissioner Capps' motion.
Any further comments? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
That motion passes 401 with Commissioner Vargas dissenting.
Thank you.
And we're moving on to airport.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Andrew McBean, Airport Director. Commissioners, the budget before you today reflects a 12.30 change from last fiscal year's budget. The budget considerations that we have today is an increased cost of business, which make up the bulk of our budget change. In addition to that, an additional full-time employee in the airfield maintenance area. The department goals that we have this year, Commissioners, is to complete the fiscal year 26 capital projects at the airport, implementing a new air traffic monitoring system to lower operating costs at the airport and enhance the airport's noise compatibility, and announce competitive solicitations for available aeronautical properties to comply with federal and state regulations. Commissioners, as always, this, the airport is an enterprise fund. The budget before you is funded by the airport's own revenues, and the budget before you is considering our ability to ensure the ongoing maintenance and operation of the airport in a safe and serviceable condition as required by both the federal government and the state of Florida. With that, Commissioners, I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the airport's budget.
Thank you. A couple of clarification points. 12.3% increase, not coming out of necessarily the taxpayers' pockets, it's coming out of your enterprise. Can you explain what an enterprise fund is? A lot of folks that are watching at home might not know what that means.
That's correct, Commissioner. So that 12.30% is coming from the airport's enterprise fund. Being an enterprise fund, the airport operates like a business. That's a part of a government agency. We generate our own revenues, and our own revenues is used to support both the operating and capital expenditure for the airport. So we do not operate on the taxpayers' dollars, Commissioner.
So in other words, as you mentioned, just like a business, you're going to fund your increased request from dollars that is generated on the site?
Absolutely. And just like a business, we're also looking for ways to reduce our expenditures as well.
And you also mentioned that you're doing, there's three categories. FAA is constantly putting requirements on you for safety and efficiency that you have no choice but to participate in, correct?
That's correct.
The state, the FDOT, is doing similar.
That's correct.
How much would you say between FDOT and the FAA you bring in, or they contribute in grants?
In all of our grants, the FAA right now is doing 95%, and FDOT is doing 2.5%, Commissioner.
And then the rest is based on the fees and monies that you were able to collect?
That's correct.
So when the FAA, some people are like, well, you know, why are we slaves to the FAA? Well, the FAA is paying for 95% of what they're asking for you to do.
Yes, Commissioner.
Which is based on their feeling that these things would enhance safety and efficiency at the airport?
Absolutely, Commissioner.
Okay. And then the other thing is, is that a 12.3%, even if it was enterprise dollars, it's not like you're just deciding, hey, we should add all these luxuries in. You might spend money this year, and as you mentioned, in an effort to decrease costs in future years. So it costs you money to enhance a program or a technique that you're using, but in the future, it'll be less expensive to actually operate it.
That's correct, Commissioner.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention that the revenue source is fuel, flowage fees, and leases from the airport FBOs.
As well as the Customs and Border Protection facility.
And not just FBOs. DeHaer is not an FBO, and they're paying a lease, right?
Yes, sir.
So anyone that's a tenant on the airport property.
Yes, Commissioner.
And when we move the maintenance facility that is currently a government entity, operation that's on the property of the airport, when we move them out, that'll free up how many acres?
About four to five acres.
You can then rotate back into your revenue generation. Thank you.
Commissioner Vargas.
Okay, so I toured the facility. We've had discussions. I understand about what an enterprise fund is. So when you hire an outside attorney to help you with litigation or to offset, who pays for that?
The airport does, Commissioner.
Okay. So this 12.3%, what are, what are you asking for the taxpayers of Martin County to pay?
$0, Commissioner.
$0. Because we need to be cutting expenses here. We have tremendous, tremendous responsibilities, and we don't want to be cutting back services. So we're going to have to find another way. And I just want that verified, and I want that videotaped also. So this costs nothing, this will not increase the taxpayers' bills. Is that correct?
That's correct, Commissioner.
Commissioner Heatherington.
My question, Mr. Donaldson answered it, the revenues are, or clarified it, fuel, flowage fees, leases, and.
Customs and border protections.
Customs and border protections. And what, your additional FTE, I'm just curious, what does that position do?
That's going to be additional airfield maintenance employees. So with the additional capital products that we're doing to maintain a safe and serviceable airport, comes new technology and new equipment and a required level of service that's expected by either, both the flying public and the FAA.
Does the, seeing as many of our fees are generated from the businesses at the airport, do you review this budget with the stakeholders at the airport?
Not always. Sometimes when we, when we bring certain things, before we bring certain things before the board that could impact their fees, yes, we do review that with the stakeholders at the airport. Yeah, so yes, yes.
No one has any additional questions. I'll move tentative approval of the airport budget.
I will second that.
Any further discussion? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll move on to building.
Everyone wore blue blazers today.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Jeff Darty, Director of the Building Department. Today, we're presenting our budget for 2026 fiscal year, and we're asking for an increase of 10.86%. Seven and a quarter percent of that is requirements of the collective bargaining agreement, with the overhead associated that through FICA and the FRS. The balance has two main components, one of which is the allowance for overtime. We have overtime in there. We have records dating back to the 1980s. We went to an enterprise software system in 2017, 18. At that time, it's the cell system that makes us much more efficient. Efficiency has allowed us to lower our fees in 2023, and we lowered our fees again in 2024. So we're very conscious of that. We did so looking out in the future for what revenue we would be receiving. The difference between what we're doing with. The difference between what we're doing with the overtime and the Acela is we had many documents that predated the Acela that were basically put from paper into PDF format and stored on our servers. We also received notification from the IT department that when we went to Acela, all our records were kept on a server in-house. The cloud at the time was in its infancy, and it wasn't really known how well it performed. Last year, we had a technology consultant with Acela convert all our documents that were in Acela from our servers to the cloud, and therefore, we didn't have to pay to replace our servers here. We are in the process of converting the old documents that are on servers, not in Acela, into Acela so that we'll have a proper maintenance in the cloud for that. We discovered that it's much more efficient for our staff to do it. We average about $9 to $9.50 per file to actually create a file, copy the file, and put it in. And consulting would be much more expensive. We also have new legislation by the state that requires us to dispose of records at a certain timeframe. So we're currently working backwards from the first year prior to Acela, which is around 2017, back to our 10-year date, which will probably be in the 13 or 14 range because it's the date where the project was started. And at that time, we'll do the disposition of those documents. So the overtime is for an efficient disposal and proper disposal of our historic records through the requirements of the state. The third item is a new FTE, Plan Reviewer and Inspector. We have a very efficient organization. We have recently taken over and support the, we act as the Building Department for Indian Town. In that particular case, we anticipated $50,000 of revenue. Through the first nine months of this year, we've generated $79,000. So we are funding that and receiving reimbursement appropriately. Additionally, we have five people on our staff, both full-time employees and part-times, that are currently in their eighth decade of life. We have our inspect, that's in the 70s, not 80s. But the next one, too, is half of our staff that goes and does building inspections are 60-year-old or higher. Believe it or not, I'm in that category. So half of our staff is there. We need to plan for the future because this could be a big problem. We have over 12 people now that could retire today and walk out. They have either retired and come back, or they're currently eligible to retire and drop. So in a blink of an eye, our staff could change overnight. It's very important for us to compete to, against the private sector. We literally compete against the private industry. The private provider statutes, every year, the state makes it more and more difficult for us to compete against them. Most recently, July 1st, if a private provider comes in with plans, you must, you shall issue a permit within five days. We are allowed 30 days through the statute, but if we do 30 days, we might as well just close our offices. So we have to compete against the private industry. We are 100% user-funded. We generate money, and we also contribute about 20% of our budget back to the county for the support they provide us through indirect. That includes legal, budgeting. Thank you, Stephanie. Also, HR, IT, all those things of that nature. So we not only generate our own revenue, we contribute for our overhead that the county provides us. Couple other things the state has done. They've given us more with the milestone inspections. That was a big thing with the condominiums. They've increased the requirements as of July 1. We have substantial reporting requirements through the Department of Professional and Business Regulation. So we have to take and accommodate that. We have to create our own emergency management plan separate from the counties for a building department and functionality after an event. And all these just became online. They just totally revamped the local licensing law that went into effect July 1. So we have a lot of reading to do and get on board. We're working very closely with legal for that to make sure they come together. Overall, in the county, we have seen a little increase year to year. We're up about 125 single-family homes over last year. We're up about 120 townhouses. Cumulatively, you can almost pinpoint, that was the townhouse project at Cantor and 95 behind Cracker Barrel. And I think the new homes are probably related to Newfield. Interestingly enough, with the increase in townhouses, our average cost of construction has not decreased, but actually increased a couple thousand due to the high value of the ones coming in from Atlantic Fields. There haven't been many came in, but they are very high-end. So our revenue has been consistent. When we looked out and lowered our fees to remain competitive, we are covering our overhead. We are providing the service, and we must continue. Again, we're the only government entity that I know of that competes head-to-head directly with the private provider industry as it's mandated through the state. So with that, I'd be glad to expand on any of the questions. And one other thing, the commercial was up about 40, 50% in terms of dollar volume. We measure commercial in dollar volume because you can have a small modification to a dentist's office or a new office building. So from our perspective, the revenues are remaining consistent and strong, ahead of our forecast, and we've been able to continually lower our fees and maintain the operational efficiency because we are purely a service.
Commissioner Campy?
Thank you. That was thorough. I appreciate that. If you could touch on code enforcement a little bit, and derelict boats fall into your world as my first question. My second question is, I think it bears repeating. You had said user-funded. The airport said enterprise. No tax dollars from our budgets are used, no ad valorem budgets, dollars are used. You are funded through the fees that you're collecting from the people that are utilizing your services for the most part. Is that correct?
Yes, we are not an enterprise fund by definition of the county. We are by statute 553, which is part of the building code. And we are not allowed to take any of our money to spend on anything but the enforcement of the building code. However, we do pay indirects, which is allowable. As I said, we pay actually 20% back to the county for the support that they provide us to operate.
Right. So to that point, you said HR, IT, legal, budget. So some dollars that are collected through fees of people utilizing the services can then go back into those departments, as you said, indirect, which then, if someone from, we'll use Ms. Merly as an example, if someone from her department is working on assisting you with your budget, they're not exclusively a building department expert in Ms. Merly's department. They're then using, so there is an indirect, as you said, advantage for taxpayers to have the services universally because of funds that are collected from your department.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell me about code enforcement and derelict boats?
Derelict vessels is actually a function that is mandated by state through law enforcement. The county comes involved once law enforcement tags a boat, designates it as derelict or about to be derelict, two different categories. And they run their course, which is 21 days. The sheriff's attorney gives us a letter saying they've adjudicated essentially the case, hand us a letter, and then we remove the derelict vessel. We currently have about 30 on any year. It can go up with a hurricane or that, but it seems to be right in that range. Our typical boat is about 30 feet long, 25, 30 feet fiberglass. All those boats must be destroyed. They cannot be reused except if it was used for an artificial reef program, which typically none of them are in shape that would qualify for that, so they're destroyed. All of our derelict vessel cases, approximately 50% are able to be brought back into compliance. Only 50% of them are actually destroyed. We have a dedicated full-time person doing that who works hand-in-hand with the sheriff's office and has retired from the sheriff's office. So there's a good synergy there, and it's very important. They go out, and if there is a boat that's tagged as derelict, we will know about it within a day, at the longest, if not the day of. We prepare our paperwork. We contact our vendor. They go out, they take a look at it, give us an estimate. So as soon as we get the letter from the sheriff's office or the city of Stewart's Attorney, if it's adjacent there, we are able to act on it immediately. In terms of code enforcement?
We'll go on to code enforcement. Let me just say that Jeff's program and the synergy they've had with the sheriff's office, they've taken on the road, and other counties are trying to copy the accomplishments that they've made. So it is, it's really a close collaboration between his department and the sheriff's office, and also lining up the contractors to be able to do this. It's not as quickly as he laid that out. It's not as simple as that, and it takes a lot of effort also to line up the grant agencies and things to help supplement the funds. And so Jeff's team has done a really remarkable job in that field.
And also reaching out to find the folks that might own these boats. And I know that in Palm City along the South Fork, one of the larger complaints I get is people that are desperate to get these boats, especially while they're still floating, because once they sink, everything in them goes into the river. So I mean, I don't think most people would comprehend that our building department encompasses and handles all of these other categories. So when people are like, well, why do you need this amount of employees, and why is your budget going up? Because what we require of you, whether it's state-mandated or we've just put it in as the B OCC, your job is much bigger than most people might consider.
By way of example, FDEP had a news release or press conference out of Indian Riverside Park not quite a year ago to tout what they were doing through Fish and Wildlife, too, for derelict vessels. And they had said they, from Melbourne down to Keys, they had, excluding Martin County, they had taken 43 derelict boats in at that time. Martin County alone had taken in 42. So we actually take care of ours and get rid of them very quickly. So
Thank you.
Working with the sheriff is law enforcement because it is their legal responsibility to tag it, and then our responsibility to remove it. In terms of code enforcement, we continually look to improve efforts in that. Over the years, we look to make things better for how we do code enforcement, also the building code. An example is code enforcement historically would go out and look for expired permits, which really could be a building department function or is in code enforcement. They look at working without a permit, and we also have people looking unlicensed contractors. So what we've recently done is said, okay, how can we do this better, get better coverage? So we've taken and merged those positions so that one person has a third of the county, and we'll look for unlicensed contractors, expired permits, and working without a permit, and divide them up and put them all in the building department, which will ultimately make the cost of code enforcement less. But it also gives us better coverage, so we have less people traveling the whole county and a third concentrating in each. And we've started that just about over a month ago. And it gives us better success rate because people get to know their area better and what's going on. So we continue to look at those types of things, how we can operate better.
Commissioner Vargas?
Yeah. I understand what you're talking about, ePermitHub. And you and I have had a couple of conversations also. Is this an AI program? Have you considered AI? Other counties are, and it really cuts down on their costs if the public can use AI to come in and start the process or complete the process or in between.
That's a great question, based on just the timing list of the new laws that came through July 1. There's, depends on what your definition of AI is, I guess. ePermitHub is a way to view documents much better than our older system. It's integrated into the Acela software, which is the enterprise management system. The state recently allowed AI to be used for building permit reviews. What specifically that means, we don't know. We're looking at software for that. By statute, it must have human eyes on it to sign off. So at what point does AI start, and what point does AI stop? Several of these vendors are providing new software for AI, and we're looking at that. We obviously can't just plug and play in all the software, so we've got to make sure it's compatible. Most recently, ePermitHub, we've had those discussions. And we're looking for some guidance from DBPR and from the Florida Building Commission for what is exactly acceptable for how you do AI, but still maintain the quality control requirements of statute 553. So some of the legislature is actually in conflict with what we have to do, and that's what they're working through right now. We certainly want to use that. To certain degrees, we use remote inspection. So if someone has a hot water heater, goes out on Friday night, the plumber comes up Saturday and fixes it, you know, is one thing. But if they come in Tuesday, get a permit on Wednesday, and they get their hot water heater changed, they don't want to take the day off on Thursday and wait for an inspector to come. So we have a visual spec, and we were one of the first people to use it. It is a geo-coded inspection software. So you take videos or pictures within the visual spec software. You cannot take a picture on your camera and upload, so it has a longitude and latitude component, so you can't take a picture of someone else's garage. Pinpoint it down. They'll go through all the points of the hot water heater, the electrical connection, the electrical panel, all those components. It's done. It's sent in electronically, then our inspector reviews it remotely for compliance. You can always ask our inspector to come out, but many people for those types of services, such as changing a hot water heater, changing an air conditioner, where we do have the, where you're just changing, not creating a new one. Sometimes people will put a larger hot water heater in, and then that will require a larger electrical connection, and that's where we would pick it up. So that's the introductory one. We use drones to, for both inspection quality and for safety. If you have a roof two-story or a slope that's greater than 612, which is approximately 45 degrees, we'll put a drone up and inspect the roof that way. It is surprising to me how accurate and detailed they can be because the drone goes up and zooms in, and you can literally read writing on the nail of the head, you know, read what's on there. I'd have to call on the roof with my reading glasses to get that close to look. So we use technology that way as well, and we continue to look at operations with our enterprise fund and with AI and alternative inspections and those types of things to provide our customers the best service. And we do have, I believe, the lowest rates of any building department in the area.
Right. I was thinking about cutting down costs, you know, maybe eliminating a position if you don't need somebody to go out, or something else within your department.
If we need them, because we are getting more and more mandates to be more competitive with the private industry. If we cut them, it would cut, it wouldn't have any effect on taxpayer because we're 100% funded. We are a little bit different than most businesses in the sense that we're kind of like an airplane. You go buy a ticket to fly somewhere, you pay upfront before you fly. You come in the building department, and you pay us when you get your fee. So you've paid us for inspections. We better provide the best possible service because you have paid for that. And that's the expectation of all the customers. We do not roll inspections. Roll inspections where you get too busy, and you say, hey, I can't get there today. We'll do it tomorrow. We have never done that since I've been there. The customers expect the service. If we have to work late, we'll work late. If we don't, we will be competing against private industry. They have paid for that service, and we do it. We don't have unlimited ability to inspect. An inspector cannot go out and do 30 inspections a day because essentially, they will violate the license requirements where they have to do so much each day. We do have remote tablets, instantaneous. If an inspector goes out and passes an inspection, hits the button, it immediately notifies the builder, the owner, and staff of what it is. So that has been very, very successful. The building inspectors do not come into the department. They immediately go in the field because everything is on their tablet. So all that investment in technology has allowed us to lower our fees each of the last two years and remain competitive.
Cost, too. I was referring to cost also within your department.
As I said, we are probably the lowest rates of fees of any building jurisdiction and continue to provide the service. We just recently, about a year ago, I noticed that our inspectors were spending too much time on the phone, answering calls. They really didn't, excuse me, our plan reviewers. And we entered a 24-hour scheduling. So if you wanted to call in and talk to a plan reviewer and had a specific question, we will make appointment. You will get a call at 2:20 on Tuesday. We won't call you Tuesday. We'll call you at 2:20 or whatever that is. You have a choice of a face-to-face, a phone call, or a Zoom meeting. And on 25% of them, the person, we have a dedicated person to manning that system, they are able to, if it's a simple question, get that question, get it answered, answer the question, and cancel the meeting because we have answered the client's question prior to the meeting.
Okay. Commissioner Heatherington?
I think you've done a good job with, I've gotten good feedback on your fees and your response times, and particularly that scheduling the appointment. So while this is not particular to yours, but Stephanie, you did an introductory in the beginning, the slide that had the efficiencies and the enterprise leasing was, and there's some changes in yours and a number of departments. Could you just give a brief overview on that fleet leasing and how, what the efficiencies will realize from that?
So I'll give a little introductory on that, but Sean Donahue will be able to explain that a lot more thoroughly. But high level from a budget perspective, we previously had our own light fleet vehicle fund, and we would purchase vehicles outright, and we would have replacement costs for a vehicle, say, for 10 to 12 years, that each department would pay into the fleet replacement fund in order to replace that vehicle at its end of life, say, 10 to 12 years down the road. And as we mentioned at the And as we mentioned at the beginning of the workshop, we're constantly looking at ways to save the county money and do things better. So we looked into the enterprise fleet lease program, and essentially, what it's going to do is create a lease program where you would have your vehicles, and the lease would last approximately five years. We have about a four-year-like cycle that we're going to have to cycle these in. And instead of driving a vehicle into the ground at year 12 or so, you're going to be paying a lease and turning in that, that car a lot earlier than you would have at the end of that 10 to 12-year cycle. What this does is it reduces costs not only for repairs and maintenance, because that's what tends to happen towards the end of life of a 12-year-old vehicle, but it's also going to save, it's going to give us a higher rate of return for the leased vehicle at the end of the cycle, as well as keep things pretty much level year over year. So we aren't as susceptible to those huge increases in vehicle purchases because enterprise has such great buying power compared to a little county like us. So we're able to really maximize and take a look at the, at the vehicles that they have available to us to kind of fit our needs a little bit better. We're able to downscale a lot of vehicles to, and then our fuel efficiency as well will essentially go up because we won't need to burn through the fuel as bad at year 10 to 12. I say that as somebody who's not a light fleet expert. Sean can explain that, but from a budgetary perspective, it looks like we're going to see a lot of cost savings down the road.
And when will that begin, Ms. Merly?
In FY '26. So we are, yes, so this budget, you'll see there's reallocations within each division. There used to be a light fleet replacement charge, and now you'll see, it'll say rentals and leases, light fleet. That is just a reallocation of those funds previously. So it starts in FY '26. The departments are creating their vehicle list right now, so we're able to cycle that first year of vehicles in. That's year one. I think it's 185 vehicles, but it's going to take four years to fully cycle all of those vehicles in. And I'll talk, I'll let Sean talk now.
You said everything absolutely perfectly.
I've learned a lot. If that helps.
Thank you.
Commissioner.
During your item.
Commissioner Capps.
Yes, Mr. Dougherty, can you comment a little more about the state requirement to dispose of old records? I know that in the insurance claim situations these days, a lot of times, residents need access to old records at the building department in order to prove things about the work that was done on their homes. And will that ability be preserved, or will we be losing that ability?
My understanding is there was some issues with government entities charging a lot of money to research documents that roll because there's so many documents. And ultimately, it involved into specific timeframes for building departments, and the building department for residential is 10 years, and it says you shall dispose. So anything beyond 10, 10 is based on the final inspection, final certificate. So it could have been two years building, so let's say 12 or 13. But beyond that, we're mandated to dispose of those records. And commercial has a different cycle, but they both have a very definitive cycle that was put in that legislation.
That's interesting because I know, you know, a lot of times, people will need to dig way back in time, you know, to prove something to an insurance company. But then I realize also it's a state mandate. There's not anything you can do about that.
We, we often get questions on mobile homes and when the deck was put on in the 1980s. And so in 90s, and we, we get those all the time, but eventually, when we totally comply, those records will not be available.
Interesting. Another thing if you could comment on is giving 20% back to the county. Tell us a little more about that.
Well, there's indirect, and it is established through the budget process. We do, we support budget, which obviously, they work with us monthly and monitor our costs and expenses. IT, we work with IT. They support the IT functions that we have, as well as purchase computers when we need it. All that is routed through them and those services. We also use legal on many different things, whether it's compliance with a statute or licensing board and, and all those types of things that are in there. We have contracts that we work with legal on. We have HR as we hire people and recruit people and all the functionality that HR provides, as well as any other departments that support us.
And occasionally, your county administrator.
Yeah.
If I, if I may, we conduct an indirect cost study or a cost allocation plan every two years. And what that does is evaluate all of the expenses for all of those various departments, like county administration, budget, county attorney's office, information technology, even so far as the clerk of the circuit court, the services they provide as well. And through that indirect cost study or that cost allocation plan, they're able to derive proportions that my office assists Jeff or my office assists, say, fire rescue as well. And then what, instead of my salary, for example, being 100% property tax-funded, what they're doing is offsetting my expense through contributions in the indirect cost study. So he's essentially paying for my services, pretend I'm a vendor for him. I'm providing him excellent service, and he has to pay for that.
Okay. It's, it's apparently non-negotiable.
It's non-negotiable.
We, we also pay general services for the maintenance of our building and cutting of our grass and all those. So we contribute, you know, whatever's appropriate to us as the landscaping bill and the odds and ends that they come and do for, for us from time to time.
What's ever considered a centralized service, such as general services, so the air conditioning's running here, we have to pay for that, and that's kind of divvy-dump amongst all the divisions within the county to come up with that. It's Tracy Hurt unfortunately gets to do that cost allocation plan, and it's, it's pretty dreadful, but it's very thorough.
I have a business, and I've interacted with the Martin County Building Department for 32 years. And I would, and I interact with a lot of other ones as well. And I would have to say that the Martin County Building Department has a, a very clear customer service mindset compared to the other ones. And I appreciate that very much, and I'm sure that comes from top down. So I appreciate that. And a couple of things that I think go into that customer service mindset that you mentioned that stand out to me are the lower fees. I know that some of the building departments around the state almost look at building department fees as a cash cow, where they're, they're in the profit-making business or something, because the fees are quite outlandish, and those fees get passed on to customers. But that's not really the case at the Martin County Building Department. The fees are quite reasonable compared to the other building departments. And then also, I really appreciate the fact that you don't roll inspections, as you mentioned, because it, it seems to me like when building departments do that, they're basically signaling that the economy is at their mercy, you know? And, you know, the economy doesn't stop because building departments can't get to their inspections. And you don't shut the economy down and say, well, I'm sorry, you can't, you can't work tomorrow because I don't have time to come and do your inspection. And I appreciate the fact that you all do not do that.
Thank you for the kind words, and I'm, I'm fortunate to be part of a team that has great staff, so they get all the credit.
Yay. Okay, moving on. Commissioner Vargas.
No, I think that was an old light.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move tentative approval of the building department budget.
And I will second it.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, aye. Opposed, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll take a lunch break now. We'll be back at 1:30.